Very early scheduled mayor and council meeting for the town of Berlin. It is Monday, August 26, 2024. And please join us for a moment of silence followed by-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Motion to approve of a motion by Councilmember Morris. Second by Vice President Burrell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. And all council members present. Up next is agenda item 2A, items for approval. We do accept public comment on items for approval before their action. Up first is agenda item 2A, motion 2024-48, the approval of a special event one-day permit application for the community outreach improved giveaway hosted by the Trinity Holiness Church on Saturday, September 28, 2024. And we have one of our own here, Ricky. Do you want to come forward with us and just tell us a little bit about the event?
Yes.
And I know everybody recognizes Ricky. He's one of our Public Works employees as well. So thank you for the work that you do every day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Why stand here?
You can sit or stand.
Okay. I never did. For the time being. Hey Jimmy.
We all need some chocolate.
Well, you look good Ricky. You're rocking it from the beginning.
Oh, yeah. I tried to. Tried to. You gotta get off some of this weight, man. It's hard. Yep. But I won't be long. But I just want to thank y'all for improving the outreach. I go to a church in Frank. Been going there since 1995. So I met my wife back and everything. We got married in 98. And we've been trying to reach out to people that are in need. The homeless, people that are struggling, that are working. So we're coming up with, this is not the first rodeo. We've been doing this for a while, but we never did it here. We wanted to have a thing at the 20th for next month. Everything free. Food and everything, barbecue, chicken and hot dogs, hamburger. And then we're gonna have people give you testimonies that came from drugs and alcohol, people that have been molested and people that lived alternative life. And they've been delivered from, you know, part of God. And then we just want to reach out because we know that people, even this area, that is, you know, they've been going through so much. They're not working. Some are homeless. So I feel that this area will be a good place to hit the next, you know, I mean, this is our probably about third, fourth, fifth one. So I wanted to do it right down here. Yeah. And there's nothing, we're selling it, we're not selling anything. It's all free, nonprofit, you know. So, you know, and, you know, because of welcome, if you want to stop up there, you get, get something to eat or whatever, hey, we just have a good time and we'll be music, you know, and everything.
Thank you Ricky.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Do we have any questions for Ricky before we open it up to public comment? Okay. This will be quick. We'll open it up to any public comment regarding motion 2024-48. Seeing none, we'll take action by the council.
I'll move to approve back there to think of a more worthwhile project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Second.
Motion by Vice President Burrell and the second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. And this is the most important motion.
Is there anything, Mr. Rick, that we can, I mean, are you all accepting donations from a person, from a, for your event, from other, from outside entities?
Sure. Like people give us clothes, like sometimes food. We're trying to give the food back. And whatever donation we can, you know, I don't take it. I give it to the ministry. I give it to the charter.
Right.
And they go and get, this one lady, she goes and buys food, you know, things like clothes, shoes, things like that. Because some, some people can't, this time of year they're homeless, they can't stay like too long in the places that they go. Like what's called purple code or whatever. They only give a certain amount of time. So she trying to, sometimes she might help them trying to get them up. They set them up in a hotel for like a day or two, whatever. Whatever she can do. Buy them tents, because some of them are out in tents, especially Georgetown. They're in tents in the woods. And, you know, winter's coming. So she buy tents for them, you know, stuff for blankets. Yeah. So, yeah, we take, we do take donations.
And who should people get in contact for that?
If you give them contact? Yeah, it's, her name is Sandy Hazard.
And do you want to give a number?
Yeah, let me give you, yeah, I have her number. That's who I was talking to.
Okay. When I saw you downstairs?
Yeah, yeah.
So while he's pulling it up, can I also make a question to waive the, to approve the request for the waiver of the park fee for the post church?
It actually, they did get their nonprofit to us. So that's something that I can perform on.
Alright.
Who called you up?
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Her number is 302-
302-
531-
531-
8722-
8722 and her name again?
Sandy Hazard. Yeah, she lives in Swallow and that dollar.
So anybody that wants to help contribute or donate?
Yeah, get in touch with her.
Same.
Uh huh. Yeah. It's in the packet.
I can put with your-
Yeah, you got it.
I can put the information on the access channel.
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
Right.
Thank you Ricky.
And that's about all. Thank you guys, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Hey, you keep Berlin looking good, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the job.
I agree. We appreciate you.
Thank you all. Alright. Now, I can go now, right?
I said this Jimmy, I said, what time does Ricky need to be back?
Yeah. Yeah, no, like she works and then we, I try and spend time with her. We sit and watch TV, watching movies.
Enough sex.
Prayer racing and all. So, you know, I just want to spend time with her.
Ricky, happy, wild, happy life. We'll see you later.
Yes, yes. Man, come hang out with me here, Rick. I got to see you. Y'all have a good one. Thanks again.
You too. Thank you. Alright, up next is item 2B, motion 2024-49, approving Becker Morgan for architectural and engineering services for the development of a new public works facility. Town administrator Mary Boland's gonna run point, but I think we have a few, at least one member of the Becker Morgan group.
Yes.
Bill Seig.
Turn it right over to them.
Alright. Take it away.
Thank you everybody.
How are you?
We know each other, but introduce yourself for the folks that may be watching at home and that are here dealing.
Yeah, I'm Phil Seig from Becker Morgan Group. And I'll be the project manager and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, we are too. That was one of our Public Works employees that was up here just before you. So it means a lot to everybody in town, but definitely the folks that are working on building currently every day.
Sounds like a great, exciting event there too.
Okay. So, alright, do you want to just walk us through or do we want to start with, let's hit the high ones. So, let's go over the conceptual design survey with a total of approximately $30,000. Design and construction documents, about $220,000. The total of both, about $250,000. And then we will move through the construction side. So this would get us up to getting everything in place, design and documents needed to be able to go through.
Well, I have a question. Just a clarification, a clarification question. Under the project scope, which is page 18 of the packet. There it is, okay. 18 of the packet. It has here, and this is just my key thing, but it refers to the entire four parcel complex. And it refers to the maintenance facility will also include a future skate park. So I just wanted to be clear. Skate park's on 410. So this is gonna maybe encompass 490, 410 and 191? How are we looking at that?
So this would be, the skate park and public works are both on 410. But I think what this is saying is it's gonna look at it holistically. Like when we start to lay out the public works facility, we gotta take into consideration.
And plus, we just have work sessions. So it's our piece of-
Yeah, I mean, this is, yeah, this is definitely, we're not gonna let him design public works facility. It takes a little time.
Anything that you want to elaborate on regarding both, all of those phases that get us to the 250,000?
Not unless there are questions. I mean, you know, we usually like to start with the survey based off, you know, it's the concept, the program, and then, you know, move forward from there. I mean, there's lots of kind of checkpoints within that process for, you know, for input and for us to, you know, be sure we're all on the right path. So there's kind of a normal process we like to chase down.
Any questions for the council? Seeing none, we'll open it up to any public comment regarding motion 2024-49. Seeing none, we'll take action by the council. Motion to approve of the motion by Councilmember Nair. Second. Second by Councilmember Oris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that motion 2024-49 passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
I have a question not, not related to this project. But is Brandon still in?
He is, yes.
Would you, would you be so kind as to let him know that Dean Borrell sure can start as friend?
I absolutely will. I will see him tomorrow on Paris. I will let him know.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Phil.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Yep.
Alright, up next is agenda item 2C, which is motion 2024-50, approving Haley Architecture for professional services for the town hall renovation project. Has Mary Boland running point, but we have Haley Architecture here with us today. So thank you. Just a name and-
Hi, I'm Danielle Haley. I'm principal of Haley Architecture. And I will be the project lead on the town hall renovation project. I'm also partnering with two other firms, SRA for interiors and ILA for all of the engineering that you can ever dream of.
I think this building's gonna require some of that.
Yeah, some of that.
We are so surprised to see- Just to clarify, I'm sorry. Haley Architecture has also been selected to work on the community center project. Obviously, that's a wonderful job.
Correct. Well, while we're on that, I do want to say on behalf of the committee, thank you for attending our committee meetings to be able to help understand where we're at in the early phases of that.
You're welcome. And it's helpful for me to be there as well. So thank you for including me.
Well, thank you for being present.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. So let's get into town hall. I see the scope. It starts on page 24 of the packet. Summary of the fees is available on page 27 of the packet. Anything you want to touch on in that, in that process?
Again, just as discussed, it'll be architecture, it'll be structural engineering. We're gonna do a full survey of the existing building and kind of do an analysis of existing systems and recommendations, which includes mechanical, electrical systems, things like that. We do have a pretty robust interiors package because I've been part of the plans to kind of make, give this whole place a base lift. And then we will see, I did notice a little difference between the last proposal and our proposal. We do include bidding and construction administration. So just so that you're aware, that's sort of, we've allocated a certain number of hours that we think will happen during that period that we think this is the, you know, the appropriate amount of time we've spent.
Thank you. We'll open it up to any questions from the council.
I don't have, I don't have a question that's actually to be part of my hopeful motion. Do you see any problem with adding the FFNE services in now as opposed to waiting until later?
No, I mean, it's certainly a budgetary question. And just to clarify a little bit more about what that is, because we are planning on providing interior design services, but that's an extra service where they will help select and procure furniture and equipment. And that procurement is usually separate from actual construction. It's not usually run through the general contractor. So it's kind of a separate bidding process, a separate set of parameters. So they are, the firm that I'm partnering with is poised to be able to do that. But I do realize that comes at an additional fee. And we wanted to break it out, knowing budgets always are concerned, so.
With the bidding, would that utilize like some of the stuff that we have to like source well and things like that?
Absolutely, yeah.
So any additional questions?
Do you make allowances in your fees to allow for any unknown situations you might come up with? If you want this wall moved from point A to point B and, you know, issues like that?
Yes. So, I mean, you'll see there's a series of additional services and exclusions, you know. But for the most part, we are treating this building like as if we're gonna cut the entire thing. We know we're keeping the exterior, keeping the windows and generally entrances, but we're just really treating it like a full renovation. Obviously, budget's gonna drive some of that, but our plan is to move walls and do what we need to do to make it really functional. So that's, we've anticipated that time.
Looking at the workforce today and hopefully projecting-
Correct, yeah. So we're sort of rooting for growth.
This is exciting to hear. I mean, I know I've mentioned it to you when we were walking out a few weeks ago from the meeting.
But it's hot out there?
Yes. But at least three of us back here have had to use that elevator within the last four years multiple times. And to be like, jeez, well, whatever it is, I mean, you could, you could use the pulley to get me up there quicker than the darn elevator got me up.
It's slow.
Wouldn't you say? But, I mean, to use that, those things, to become more compliant, not that this isn't with whatever its title it is, chairlift, I dream of genie, whatever you call it, but to have something more efficient for our friends and neighbors and those of us when we're in those places that need that handicap accessibility is very exciting, so.
And to that point, when we're looking at, we've talked about this internally usually during our meetings, but I don't think I've ever said it publicly. What I would like to see is grouping of departments more and folks that work together closer to one another. And with that, I don't want to ever have an employee come in for an interview and think, ma'am, my office is on the second floor. And here I, I can't, because we know that that elevator, lift, whatever you want to call it, isn't fast. So if you wanted to come up and even just meet with your team or another team, it's not, right now our workforce, or the workflow of the building is not laid out that well. You can't do that if you need a lift and you can't make it up the stairs.
You need a little lift quick to get to the ladies room if you are out of luck.
So, I mean, public meetings are really a part of that, but we also function every day. And we have folks that use this building to work and provide the services to the people of Berlin. And I feel like we can't really do that right now.
I would agree. That thing is very slowly. It's two council meetings.
You should have called us from down there. We would have come and gotten you over here.
Photo friend zooming from down below. Alright, well, let's open it up to any public comment regarding motion 2024-50. Seeing none, we'll take a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to amend 2024-50 to an amount not to exceed 316,470, which includes the FFNE services.
Total of those two items. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Oris made a motion to approve motion 2024-50 with the caveat that it include designing instruction documents of 269, 670 and the optional additional services of FFNE services of 41,800. I'll second. I have a second by Councilmember Nair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the vote's unanimous.
Just to clarify, correct numbers, 311, 470.
The total of those two items.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Jack.
Well, that's why we have an HBC company.
Thank you Danielle. We appreciate our-
Thank you for working with everything.
Thank you.
We look forward to it as well. Alright, up next is agenda item 3, which is the quarterly PJM update by the electric utility director, Tim Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is for the time period between January through March 2024. I'm gonna refer back to, I'm gonna kind of compare it back to January and March of 2023. That just gives you an idea of the difference between the same time period, a year apart. In 2023, the total energy sold was 11,947,222 KWH. Compared to this year, the total was 13,893,243. The amp charges, that's based on your KWH that you sell. Their charges are, they go along with the amount of KWH that's sold. The same time period last year, it was 539,888. The amp bill for the same period this year is 606,928. So you can see the increase between the two. PJM charges last year were 194,205. This year, they're 198,943. PJM RRR credit, that's a credit back to us. Last year was 51,123. This year, it's 58,713. Fuel loop cost and other costs for the power plant for January through March of 2023 was 56,699. And this year is 264,653. The total power cost last year at this time was 739,669. Same cost for 2024 is 1,011,810. Cost per KWH sold last year was 0.06191. And this year is 0.07283. What that tells me is this winter, we're probably colder than last year at this same time. So there's higher heating bills, that type of thing, energy consumption. So that's why you're seeing the increase there in the difference.
So, how does that impact the, the forward outlook for us? What should we, is there something that we should be preparing ourselves for?
Yes, I, in fact, I was gonna talk about that tonight, but I just got a notice about it Friday. So I wasn't prepared to talk about it that quick today.
Okay.
I will be at the first meeting in September and discuss that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Tim regarding the PJM?
The, Tim, the AAR credit?
Yes.
That, where does that, how, where does that come from? Like what is that? Is that from we do something?
With the AAR credit allocation, that's transmission credits that, actually explain it at the bottom.
Yeah.
It's transmission credits to offset a portion of the network integration transmission service charges, which was 5.2 megawatts awarded in the allocation. Then the anticipated credit for June through May is gonna be about 235,656.
Any additional questions for Tim regarding the PJM update? Alright. Thank you, Tim. We appreciate it. Alright, up next is the town administrator's report and departmental's.
Actually, I don't have anything.
Any questions regarding the included report for Mary or for the department?
It's not a question, it's just a kudos to the folks working on Broad Street Live Station. It seems to be, I'm right next to it, it seems to be moving along. And the traffic folks there are nice and courteous and, yeah, it's, it's moving along.
Jamie has commented that they've been doing very well.
Whoever's on the West River Lee flagging really benefits from the trees.
Yeah.
Whoever's the East River Lee flagger drove the short. Literally they all to me.
Alright, any other questions for Mary or the department?
I had a question for Jimmy. And, you know, the situation that I've been getting some concerns about from town residents is the, along the railroad, the overgrowth and the brush. And quite a bit of work has been done, especially, I'll say, north of, I guess, Bryan Avenue 346. But there's some other areas I think that need to be addressed as well. Jimmy's been very responsive in addressing, you know, those when I hear from him. But I think there has been, Jimmy shared with me, has wanted him to share with the public and the group that maybe a little bit of uncertainty as far as what is railroad property and what's not. So I know there are bits of property owners that I've heard from that says, you know, when are we, when's our turn? So I just, Jimmy, if you could, if you had your report about them being in the areas.
I spoke with Andrew today from the railroad. And they will be still on site today and tomorrow. They're actually spraying today the tracks, their property on the track lines today and into tomorrow. And then at that point, I want to meet with Andrew, discuss property lines and boundaries and specifically coming back and finishing up some of the areas that uncertainties of maybe were missed or not uncertainties of how that the boundaries were. So we were able to look on the roadmap and find areas that we still think that are railroad property and have them address that issue.
Right, I appreciate that. I think that, you know, that, I know you and I talked about the Bryan Avenue area where that little side track for when it was operational, when they were going back and forth, that was where they went. And, you know, I just think it's, you know, important for the citizens to know what is actually their responsibility and what's not the town. So I'm sure town hall and the yours has done calls about this as well. And town hall can say, you know, this is railroad property, this is not. So appreciate the efforts being made there.
Particularly from Baker Street North again is yet one of the areas that we're still hearing some concerns about and will still address that areas.
Is there a standard for how much they own on the side of the track? Does it vary?
It does vary in some instances. We had this discussion. It could vary from where properties were owned by the railroad, say, 150, 100 years ago. And now that they sold them properties, so the line could be right up to the property, up to the railroad tracks. Berlin, Berlin, Berlin beer distributor is kind of one of them where that was probably part of the railroad 48 years ago. So, and now it's not. But so they owned closer to the tracks. But most of it is that 33 feet from the center in each direct, you know, both sides.
Is it possible you could get a survey of their property track line?
I was asking Andrew to bring any documentation he has on railways and, and boundary lines on his perspective from their, from the railroad to understand why they maybe didn't cut something and have a clear defined of why they didn't cut it.
It'd be nice to have that for the councils. So if they get questions from presidents that can-
They can, the railroad supplies us with more data on boundary lines and property lines.
And we were following an incident that happened on the railroad tracks. They've been working, we've helped them like partner with the 911 center to build out some of that in GIS so it fits into the layer that they use for the computer aided dispatching. So part of that is maybe once that's built out, we can maybe have that in a layer that's publicly accessible, right? So that people can kind of see what that looks like. But to Councilmember Nair's point, if we get that information in a hard copy and we can share that with the group, it could help with some constituent concern.
I have a question. It cannot ignore this for you or gain. But, but what happens after property owner's tree protrudes into the sidewalk or street and actually blocks division of a stop sign? What recourse does the town have?
To cut it back.
So the town has that authority to, to cut it back?
Typically, the way that's handled is that Carolyn will send a letter to the property owner letting them know the problem, giving them the opportunity to correct it. And if they don't correct it within a certain period of time, they don't really correct it. They cut it back a little bit, but not really enough. So we do have the right to go and correct it. The difference is the property owner may be very careful how he cuts it back. Our guys are just going to cut it back.
Tim has been doing tree trimming and limbing throughout the town the last couple of weeks. So Tim, like have additional things to add here?
Yes, we actually, in fact, down on Bay Street, right where Grant Street comes out on Bay, some of the trees there were so far out into the roadway and over the sidewalk. The buses were hitting them and, you know, dump trucks and stuff like that. We had to cut up to the power lines anyway, so we just cut it back right to the sidewalk.
Now, I will say-
We cleared the sidewalk, cleared the roadway.
To caveat what I just said, we are not going to encourage a property owner to go cut around power lines.
No.
We, we will take care of that ourselves.
Yeah, we're actually mandated by the state to trim at least 10 feet back from your power lines.
Any other questions for Mary or the departmental's? Alright, move on to public comment. Anyone that would like to address the mayor and council regarding any topic can come forward and just state your name and street name if you don't mind. Okay. Alright, let's move on to comments from the councils. Start with the vice president. Oh, I'm sorry, did I have one?
I forgot to mention something earlier.
From our public.
I was hoping we could, the council meeting would last till it gets dark. We have a brand new light installed in the parking lot.
Ooh.
I would just like to say thank you to Public Works and the Water Department. All, all three departments worked together to install the new light. But it might not be on when you go out because it's not dark yet.
Well, we have an executive-
We'll be here when the lights-
You'll be here when- We'll be here when it gets dark.
All right, let me know what you think about it.
I will. Thank you. Thank you again for spearheading that project, and I know when we were looking at FY '24, well, yeah, '24 and then '25 budgets, you had brought it up both times.
Yeah, we actually started in '23, I think it was.
I can't recall, I know that you brought it up a couple of times and we weren't able to make the funding happen, but, yeah, I think it's going to add a lot to the safety and the setting.
It looks nice, too.
Nice, Joe. I didn't see, is there a buffer in there to keep folks from backing into it?
There is, we put bollards on the side of it. Actually, I was there today when a couple of cars pulled in, so they were able to navigate, putting them well around it, and you can see it, it's bright yellow, and they're tall enough where you can see it at the door.
But it's also, when the cars were parked, it just went out a couple of minutes ago, too, between our meetings.
Right.
You don't notice the bollards.
No, not.
You see the lights when the cars are there, you don't.
Correct.
Thank you.
Looks good.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, and start with Vice President Burrell.
The only thing I have is, I just want to remind the public with school starting on Tuesday, I want to remind the public of the speed campus that are now on Flower Street and Brand Street, trying to help you stay applied with the speed of those areas.
Thank you. Well, can I read the chief for a second? Because he says, now, the ones that are closer to the high school, we refer to that as Peach Lane, even though it is Flower Street, we call that one, um, this is my best chief voice, Peach Lane, so, Flower Street, Peach Lane, and so you have.
Sorry, good impression.
Thanks.
We got a uniform for you. Councilmember Nurr.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on the railroad thing, so we've had some complaints from residents along Baker Street regarding the operation of the tronex there, specifically reporter John, parking issues. You know, according to Ivy, you said there's nothing in the town code.
I would say that I think that Sarah and I talked, and I think that that's going to change.
Okay, my request was, if we could get somebody here from the railroad company that is knowledgeable about that lease, we could have a better understanding of what they can do to affect changes there.
I think that we've got some new information.
Okay.
So let's see where that goes, and then maybe we can go from there.
And you'll share it with us.
Yes, okay. Happy to.
All right, thank you. No, no, that's fine.
Councilmember Nichols?
A couple of things. First, I'd like to say kudos to St. Paul United Methodist Church. Jeans for Jesus was a huge community success, having literally the food truck there, you could go in and go produce shopping, like, literally, you go inside with your little whatever, did they give you that? Or whatnot, you went in and did your groceries, I thought that that was great, on top of the rest of the services that were there. I mean, there was a guy doing deep tissue massage, or a couple of people, he and the lady, and having all of the other services and utilities there to provide, but I will say, high five and shout out to the town of Berlin, along with Beacon, for having our survey available and on hand, live, in her, well, you could do the little QR code, you could do the paper version, for our community center. The excitement and the buzz in the neighborhood was, had, was live on Saturday. Everyone was excited, lots of people, where do I go do this community center survey? And there was, I don't know if you've seen yet, I don't know if anybody has any work on how it's looking, but it appeared that a lot of folks were definitely taking interest in giving their, providing their input for the community center and knowing that, and of course, it's open to all of the town, but they were one of the first spots to have the input, so that's huge, and it means a great deal to the community. Secondly, what was the second thing? Blame it on my age, folks, I can't even remember what it was, I think I already know, I don't know, I forgot. I might get it wrong.
Wait, come on up. Oh. I was wondering who that will be. Yeah, so, I don't have a whole lot, I just wanted to give kudos again to St. Paul's because it was a great event that I was able to attend with, Tim Nichols and the mayor. And I also want to give a shout out to Stevenson, you know, I mentioned this for their event with their windows, and I'll let Councilmember Green talk more about it, but both of them were great events, I think very well attended. You know, I keep wanting to say, if you want to check out the ones in the church, of course, you just look at them, but I think you might have more on how to look on the inside, aside from, you know, going on Sunday. But that's, that's all I had, it was great events and the survey, which I'm sure Mayor will talk about a little bit more, was very easy.
Or Sarah.
Or Sarah. It was very, I did take it, the link, I did, it was very easy to take, very, very user friendly, so, yeah, once, once the link's out there, if anybody takes it, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Well, sure, well, I'm proud of what our church done, completed with the restoration project of stained glass windows, it wasn't, couldn't have been possible without the chair, uh, support of the community and a couple of the local foundations that got recognized over the weekend, but also, you know, I think in this position, sometimes we, well, we spent a lot of money tonight, for one thing, architectural renderings, architectural services.
We have heard.
But it's going to go soon, but I think that those are two projects that have been on paper for quite a while, have been wish list items, you know, Town Hall renovation, I think, that kind of goes without saying, Public Works Building, you know, that is something that I don't think any of us really have been, ever been proud of, and I think this new facility is going to be something that we're going to be proud of in time, and so, you know, I think over $500,000 was motioned to be spent today to get this process rolling, and I think, you know, that's one of the things we're up here for, is to improve the infrastructure of our town, and these are two vital projects, so looking forward to seeing those move forward.
Thank you.
I remember.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nichols, part two. It's okay, Dean's good for one more, too.
It was, I was, I was really excited to, to hear the progress that, for the process we're about to undertake with Haly Architecture, and I think about it not just in the face lamp, but the level of accessibility this building will then have for so many of the citizens of this town who, and when you look out in the audience, you only see a few faces periodically, sometimes you see more, but it's very hard for a citizen who cannot, who was, who was globally limited to get into this building. We know that because several of us up here have been in that spot, but to know that there are citizens who all day have to maneuver and think about where they can go, where they can't go, and to have their voices finally be able, not that they can't be heard otherwise, but when you're able to be present and have your voice heard, the impact speaks volumes. So having just that little bit, being able to be thought about, being done, is going to speak huge to the way that we, as this body and this building, feel for our citizens. So I say, that was my original comment, kudos to the town of Berlin for becoming more accessible.
Thank you.
Do you want to go again?
Where are we with getting the representative from the gas company to publicly share?
Jamie has reached out.
I reached out.
No, because Jamie's on vacation this week, so he may, well, have heard.
Jamie reached out through his, the next day, Jamie reached out to his contact with, like, police on the ground, and I reached out to the government affairs side of things. I don't think we have heard as of tonight, we have not heard anything back from them, so we'll re-pick them again.
There was another home in the, a couple of years ago, a child that just, and Jack has moved in.
Yeah, I would need to see the quickly.
Why don't we just make your idea work, go around again?
I need to apologize, Vicky Morel was also at the, at the event on Saturday at St. Paul's.
And it was Vice President Burrell's anniversary.
Yes.
I'm going to treat it well, well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Steve, you're up again.
Okay, thank you.
Jed?
Okay, good.
We'll move on to comments from the mayor, and I'll let Sarah start, you've got the ice cream and you've got the survey.
Thank you, yes, I just have a reminder to our boards, commissions, and committees, thank you, a reminder for the, there are about 20 board, commission, and committee volunteers who have not yet picked up their ice cream thank you certificate, which we have available every day in customer service, we're just waiting for those people to come and pick up their certificates so that they can be thanked for their service to the town of Berlin. We have distributed two thirds, but there's still a third left, and those are set to expire at the end of August. That was one thing.
Don't leave ice cream on the table.
Yes, don't leave ice cream on the table. And then about the survey, I just wanted to really commend the community advisory committee because we did a lot of work to get the survey to the position that it is now, and I think, as you said, accessing it is easy, taking it is easy, hopefully it is very user friendly, Beacon is managing all of the responses, and the mayor's working on a press release that we will be sending out this week so that people are aware that it's coming via mail and online in the next month, and it will be open until the first week of October.
We're really not going to close it, but we are going to have them summarize the data.
Summarize it.
So that we can start to combine what those responses are for a meeting in October.
One important note about it that I think is different than the last time we sent out a survey, which was also from Beacon and to residents, was that that really was restricted to residents because it was about the town's strategic plan, but this is not restricted to residents, so I think it's very important for anybody who lives and works or has a stake or an interest in the community center of the town of Berlin, they'll all be able to access it.
So basically, it's open to all of 21811?
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, anybody, period, but not just the municipality.
Exactly.
A lot of people still get caught up in Berlin when you say Berlin.
That is very true, you have no idea how many people are confused by whether or not they live in the town of Berlin, or Berlin unincorporated, Mr. County Berlin.
We filled a lot of calls for Ocean Pines, Berlin, Germany.
Yeah.
My cows, the cows are.
Berlin, Connecticut.
They're equitable.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The only other thing I'll add is that, to caveat, Councilmember Nichols, Vice President Burrell, and Councilmember Horace, it was a great turnout for Jeans, Jeans for Jesus, Jeans for Jesus. I always mess up. What is Jeans for Jesus? Jeans for Jesus, thank you. Great turnout, Pastor Briggs and the congregation did a phenomenal job. We will be getting hard copies of the survey, this was a recommendation of Beacon to places of worship, large areas that have a group of people working, so probably the Health Department, hospital, stuff like that, just to get that feedback from everybody in different sectors of the population.
Was the library one of those spots, too, or no?
No, but we can.
I didn't know, I was just wondering about that one.
To the point. And then the only other thing, farmers markets, I know we extended through October, but we're still popping in Berlin, and it's good to see. All right, that's all I have from the mayor's office and there. We'll take comments from the press, all right? Well, we're going to adjourn into closed session, so what I'm going to do is read the statement of closure before we do that. So the time and place of the closed session will be today's date, August 26, 2024, immediately following the regular session, so in just a moment, we'll hold the vote to go into closed session here in the council chambers, and then we're going to move over to the conference room for the discussion. Purpose of the closed session is a discussion regarding the acquisition of real property, and then also to consult with legal counsel and the personnel matter affecting one or more specific individuals. The date and time of the order turned back to the public meeting is our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is September 9th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Statutory authority to close the session, this meeting will be closed under the following provisions of the general provisions, Article 3-305, Item B. Three, which is to consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose and matters directly related thereto, acquisition of real property for public facilities. And Item Seven, under the public provisions article, to consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice on legal matter, and this is the OPO class action settlement, and then Item C, which is number one under the closed meeting provisions, which is to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter affecting one or more specific individuals, and we're really going to talk about a plan director. Let's see, any objection by the public for us to close this meeting and go into closed session? Seeing none, we'll take a motion by the council.
Motion.
So a motion by Councilmember Horace, a second by Councilmember Nurr, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the, let the record reflect that the vote was unanimous and all the council members were present. Thank you.